Meeting. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distancing guidelines issued by the federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in council meetings. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we are implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the link shown on the screen. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in meetings by accessing the webcast at the link shown, providing written comment at the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the city council meeting in person. We are practicing social distancing and we can only accommodate a maximum of 16 people at one time. I will call the meeting to order and ask Councilmember Ashbeck to lead us in the flight salute.
Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lynn. And if the clerk will call, roll please.
Councilmember Ashbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember One O Two is absent this evening. Councilmember Waylon.
Here.
Mayor Bessinger.
Here. We'll come to the public comments portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on any matter within the city council's jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to five minutes or less or 10 minutes per topic. Anyone wishing to be placed on the agenda for a specific topic should contact the city manager's office and submit correspondence at least 10 days before the desired date of appearance. Is there anyone in council chambers who wishes to address the council on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, do we have anybody on the web?
None.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any comments via email?
No.
Okay, I will close public comments. In regards to ordinances and resolutions, with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution or ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution or ordinance be read in full, further reading of the resolution or ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Now we come to the consent calendar. These are items considered routine in nature are placed on the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless a council member requests individual consideration. A council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motions in favor of the adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoption of ordinances, only those that have received a unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent items. Does any member of the council wish to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, does any member of the public, present in chambers, wish to have an item on the consent calendar poll? Seeing none, do we have anybody on the web?
None.
Did we get any correspondence?
No.
Okay, I will close public comments and come back to council for action.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero with one absent. Now we come to the public hearings portion of the meeting. This is an open consideration within a regular or special meeting of the city council for which special notice has been given or may be required. When a public hearing is continued, noticing of adjourned items required as per government code 54955.1. Item four, consider a request to initiate an ordinance amending, ordinance amendment to amend chapter 1.8 of Title I of the Clovis Municipal Code regarding campaign contributions due to the state law. Carrie Chauz, our presenter, Carrie.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Staff is recommending council to consider potential amendments to the Clovis Municipal Code regarding campaign contribution limits due to new state legislation. On May 29th, 2019, the state of California adopted Assembly Bill 571, which will go into effect on January 1st, 2021. This bill establishes default campaign contribution limits for candidates for city office to be the same as candidates for certain state offices. The state campaign contribution limits will apply to local jurisdictions that have not yet established their own contribution limits. The current state limit for individual campaign contributions to a candidate is $4,700, and this amount will be adjusted every two years on January 1st of every odd-numbered year. Under AB 571, cities may adopt local campaign contribution limits that are different than the current default limit that the state had set. If a city should choose to establish its own limits, those limits could be higher or lower than the current default limit set by the state. Currently, the city of Clovis does not have any campaign contribution limits with the exception of a voluntary expenditure limit set at $1 per resident of the city of Clovis. Because we have not set a limit, the candidates in the March 2021 election and future elections will be subject to the state default contribution limits beginning on January 1st. That's if we don't take any action tonight. We could later adopt different limitations after January 1st as well, but in the absence of a local ordinance or resolution addressing campaign contribution limits, we would be default to the state limitations. So tonight, staff is recommending council to consider one of the following actions. The first option is to accept the state limits, which will be adjusted every two years, and with this option, we don't have to take any action at all. Or option two, to take formal action to set no limit on local campaign contributions with the exception of the voluntary expenditure limit. This option will be consistent with what we currently have in place right now. And lastly, and option three is to take formal action to set new limits, which may be lower or higher than what the state had set. That is all I have for my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for Carrie? Lynn, I'm sorry, who's that?
So to be clear, the $4,700 per individual, that means any individual can contribute $4,700 to a candidate. That's the state default?
Yes.
It's not, that's not the cap. That's per individual to a candidate.
Yes, per contributor, per election.
Per election, okay. And in Clovis, what we've done as a voluntary program is we count how many people live in Clovis, and we say $1.
Yes, so per election, I believe it would go up to a max of 120,000, whatever our population is at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Lynn?
Carrie, does this apply to PACs and individuals and labor groups and et cetera? Or is it, does it distinguish, does the state limits distinguish that?
I do not know if I may defer to Scott.
I believe it is just per individual, so per an individual person, not a PAC or some other entity.
So PAC isn't a person, assuming it's two people.
I believe that's correct, yes.
So different limits, or they're just not included in this?
They're not included in this, so I don't think there's any additional limit beyond whatever the state, normal state limit is, but it's not the $4,700 limit per individual.
Okay. I'll have an opinion on it, but I'll wait if you have any, are you laughing? You have an opinion?
If there's no further questions for staff, I'll open this to the public. Is any member of the public, present in chambers, wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody on the web?
None.
Mr. Clerk, did we get any correspondence on this?
No.
I will close public comments and come back to council for discussion, since apparently there is discussion.
Well, so what I've thought about is, except for one moment in our history, this probably has worked the way it is now, right, which is just that $1 person. If we were going to have limits, I think the state limit is too high, because the state limit suggests the geography you're running in is bigger than the, assuming someday Clovis will have districts, are very small districts. So I feel like there should be some proportionality to the size of the space you're running in versus I could get $4,700 to run in a very small neighborhood in Clovis, or I could get $4,700 to run as an assembly member in 12 counties. So I guess I would not be in favor of the state limit. I would be more inclined to set something more moderate if we were going to set anything at all. But, so that's kind of where I am, and I'd love to hear what other people think, but that's, I'm not interested, the $4,700 doesn't seem right to me, so that's just kind of where I am, but I'd love to hear other thoughts.
Bob?
I think that it would be great to be able to get $4,700 contribution from somebody. I don't think I've ever gotten it. So, but I am concerned about the last question that was posed related to special interest groups perhaps being able to come in with a figure that is, or are not being limited in any way. I, you know, I guess my default is that if it's not broken, then why fix it? And maybe if at some point we felt that there was a need for this particular type of a limit, then by all means, let's put a limit on it. But I don't think we need to be tinkering with something that doesn't need to be tinkered with at this point. So from my perspective, I would just ask that we continue how we have, which I guess is going to require that we need to take some affirmative action or proactive action, and that would be option number two, which is take formal action to set no limit on the local campaign contributions. So that's my view.
Who's that?
Okay, so number two says take formal action to set no limit on local campaign contributions with the exception of a volunteer expenditure limit. It's always been voluntary. I don't think anybody in 22 years has ever violated that volunteer limit, but someone could. So that's, it's an honor system that no one's violated ever in Clovis in 22 years that I can speak of. And we're okay with that. That's what you're saying, that you think that?
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, I'm really focused on why are we trying to change something, or why wouldn't we want to change something that doesn't really need any changing in the city of Clovis?
Because someone could.
Somebody could come in and they could...
Go get the $4,700 from somebody and get multiple $4,700 from anyone.
Right, people could come in and they could spend, you know, $100,000. I mean, there's been some judicial races where, you know, more than $100,000 has been put in by one contributor here locally. So, I mean, it's, it is a possibility that that could happen at some point in those places that they don't have any campaign limits. And I, you know, maybe this bill is now prevented judicial candidates from being able to raise more than $4,700, I don't know. But from my perspective, nothing is changing.
But option two is just for us, the city of Clovis and Clovis candidates, right? So that means, for me, it means that, that even if we take formal action, we're basically defaulting to the state standard.
That's not the way that I understand it, no.
Not necessarily, Mr. Mayor, if I could. If you set no limit, then you're not subject to the $4,700 state limit.
Or so we'll be on that. Or so it's even worse.
Correct, well, you could set a higher limit than $4,700, yes.
So it could be even more.
That's, I think that's what option two is, is setting a limit beyond or basically setting no limit. You have no limit, there's no maximum, anything beyond $4,700, there's no cap on that. And again, that's just for campaign contributions, not for your own expenditures for your campaigns.
So just to be clear, Scott, if I can, if option number two is keeping the status quo, is that an easy way to explain that?
Well, it's kind of, I guess the status quo, currently you have no limit.
Right.
But if you keep the status quo and you don't set a limit, the status quo will change on January 1st.
I see.
The status quo will become the $4,700.
I used a bad phrase, a status quo. To keep things how they are presently in the city of Clovis, that would be choosing option two.
Correct, to have no limit if you wanted to set no limit, correct.
That's been my, that's my position.
So that was maybe what was confusing me, because it is not status quo. We have to formally say what it's going to be from January 1 forward.
Quote will change January 1 if you don't do anything between now and then. And again, as Carrie said, you could, you could wait until after January or wait until after the March election, and then at some point later on, you could set your own limit. You could still, you could be in the default with the state for $4,700 for a period of time and say, well, we don't like that default, so we're going to change it at some point. But if you don't do anything between now and January, the default will change to the $4,700 in January.
Lynn?
Well, so, because I read it on paper, I didn't click on this link right here. What's the best practice? What's the, what is Fresno County Board of Supervisors? What is the city of Fresno? What is, do most cities have a limit? What's the kind of standard in the universe?
I don't know that there is a standard that I've seen. I've seen some that have done no action, some that have just, you know, defaulted with the state, and others that have set lower limits, others that have already had limits previously and just stuck with those limits that may be higher or lower. So I don't know that it's, unless, yeah, unless other staff has done some research, I don't know that there's a consistent answer across the board.
So I did look at the link, and there's...
Because you didn't have it on paper. I had it on paper.
There was about 50 cities listed in there, and I looked at five or six or seven, and a majority of them had set a lower limit.
Yeah, I think I just, I mean, I go, if you went with $4,700 and you had four rich friends, you could run a $20,000 race and you could win in a district, I bet, in some future, if that's where, if that's where the city ends up. I just think that's a lot of money. We haven't had any abuse since, like I say, since mid-'90s, I guess, ish, you know, then. I guess the other way to get around it is you could make, we could choose option two, but make it the mandatory expenditure limit. I mean, you could go that way and just make the population $1 for every resident the maximum, and then you could spend $117,000 from one person. If you wanted to run your own campaign and you had $170,000, I guess you could just pay for it yourself, if that has any appeal. I just think some of these numbers that are super high, I don't even know what anybody's are, but, you know, $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 just seems kind of crazy for one person. So somehow a limit seems a little bit, I don't know. What do you think, Mayor?
So if we go with option two, we'd have to articulate a number, whether it's $1 per person, population-wise, which would put us at 118, 120, or we go, or we had to set our own contributions in item three, or accept item one with $4,700 per individual but not a PAC. You know, I never received anything to that tune, but I had that spent against me, so, but it came from other sources.
Mayor?
Yes.
One thing I wanted to clarify, Scott, you can help me out, but a number two is you wouldn't have to set a dollar value. You're just indicating that there's no set limit.
Okay.
Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yeah. You could set no limit, zero limit, you know, whatever you want to set, anything higher. You could set a specific monetary limit above $4,700 or just set no limit, you're not subject to the state default limit. And again, you have, you have your own limitation currently with the voluntary expenditure. Again, that's your own expenditures, right.
Which we have already in place.
Which you already have in place. You already have that expenditure limitation, which is already, I guess, kind of an artificial limitation. Again, why would you need to raise $150,000 if you're capped at $117,000 in spending? But you don't currently have any limitation on the campaign contributions that you can take in.
I would tend to agree with Bob. If it's not broken, why are we going to fix it?
All right, I'm going to make a motion.
Can I ask a question, let's ask?
Yeah, sure.
Do you want it to be still voluntary?
Yeah. So my motion is that council adopt action item number two, which is take formal action to set no limit on local campaign contributions with the exception of a voluntary expenditure limit.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, Lynn, your lights on?
Just put in the public comments.
Yeah, we closed that and came back. No. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes four to zero with one absent. Item number, thank you, Carrie. Item number five, consider approval, final exceptions of capital improvement project 15-16 Willow Avenue Widening Project. Mike Harrison is our presenter. Luke, sir, well, never mind, Mike Harrison is our presenter.
Is this like a celebration or something, like cake or balloons or something?
We should have, yes.
Yeah, we should have.
So, good evening, mayor, council members. We're here tonight to accomplish two things. The more routine is the acceptance of the Willow Avenue improvements between Shepherd and Copper Avenue. And the second, I think the more important and more exciting is that we want to take this opportunity with a project of this magnitude and importance to recognize some of our partners as well as the talented staff that we have in our engineering department that was able to put this project together. So the project widened Willow Avenue, as you know, between Shepherd and Copper to a six-lane facility. It included storm drain, utilities, street lighting, basically it's a complete street. As you know, the project was an important element of the regional Measure C, and it was included on the Tier One project list. The Measure C funding was also augmented by state-local partnership money. At $9 million, I believe this project may be the largest capital project that staff has designed and constructed using just in-house staff. So I want to recognize the two main players in our staff that delivered this project. The first is Kevin Gross, that's Kevin right here. I don't know if you've met him before. And then our new construction manager is Travis Sather, he's sitting right behind me here. These two guys did an awesome job, and I am just proud of what we were able to accomplish. And as the project engineer, this project really is Kevin's baby, and he wanted to do the presentation and present some of our partners tonight. So I'm going to turn the podium over to him, and he would like to show you some of the, or to introduce you to some of our partners.
So, do I kind of, can I point to you when we, when we go through the slide? You can go back to the, just the title real quick. All right, thank you, Mike. I just want to start by saying that this project was truly an honor for me to be a part of. I moved from the private consulting world to the public sector to have a direct impact on the city that I love, and this project was definitely one of those projects. So, thank you. Okay, so the Willow Avenue Widening Project, just to give a brief overview of it, was a widening of the northbound lanes of Willow Avenue from one lane to three travel lanes plus an eight-foot shoulder from Shepherd Avenue all the way to just south of Copper Avenue. Some of the main components, the key components on it were, of course, the road widening as well as median work and curb and gutter throughout the entire project. There was over 4,100 linear feet of storm drain infrastructure. As you widen a road, you need to account for that rain, and we put a lot of that in there and adjusted or modified or created a total of three basins within the project. There were a total of four intersections, Shepherd Avenue, Perrin Avenue, Beheimer and International, that all had signal modifications and improvements to it. There was over 10,000 linear feet of water and sewer infrastructure that moved all the way up to the north end and really expanding the potential for heritage growth to thrive. And then there was a total of 58 streetlights that were installed on the project as well. So a project of this magnitude requires the efforts and cooperation of over a dozen different agencies, cooperations, and businesses. Without the coordination and efforts from all the different parties, this project would have never been able to be done, just because of the magnitude and all of the elements involved. And especially, this project was funded by the Measure C, SETA, and of course, the local leadership programs. So as Mike mentioned, this project was heavily relied in-house for the design and the construction management of it, which is music to my ears, to be honest. I love Clovis because we do a lot of our stuff in-house. And as far as the engineering goes, we spent years in the right-of-way process, the environmental process, the design of the plan set, and it was a very much community effort. I, myself, Kevin Gross, Ryan Burnett, Claudia Casares, and Simeon Abdelian. Where's Claudia and Ryan? Are they in here? They must be outside. Sad Avery, Mike Harrison, and Rene Mathis, of the engineering. Construction management of this project was done in-house, and they did an amazing job on Travis Sather and Eric Easterling, before he left, on managing such a large project while managing all the other projects that we did in that 2019-2020 fiscal year. In the traffic department, Tim Barker and Brian Sutterfield were really the voice behind the signal improvements and the signal design. And then Colleen Vinnoff had a big part in the traffic control and gave a lot of good input on how we go about that. In public utilities, Rob Rush and Mark Faulkner were very useful when it came to the design and the commenting on the design of the project, and were surprisingly proactive when it, when we were in the construction and we needed to change something. I mean, they really dropped everything and went to it and helped us figure that problem out, and I really appreciate that. And then last but surely not least, Chad McCollum has really changed the way that we do our public outreach on capital improvement projects. The public has seemed to really enjoy what we're doing, and my girls got to see me on TV, so, thank you, Chad. They loved it. Not as much as me, I don't think, though. Okay, so because of the location of this project, we couldn't do it without the help of the county of Fresno and the city of Fresno. I mean, we were in the county, we were next door to the city of Fresno. The cooperation that we had between them was incredibly vital. Today, we have Supervisor Brando, thank you for coming. We have Steve White, and then we have Steve Dice, I'm sorry. You guys, we had a lot of meetings together. We spent a lot of time talking about how to get this project done, and even during the construction, and we really appreciate all the time and effort that you guys put into this project. The city of Fresno also had an incredible role, because they own and maintain the west side of Willow Avenue, right? And so everything we did impacted them. And specifically, when it came to cooperating with us with the traffic control, being able to shift traffic over to their side, and just the, kind of the design comments and the help with the improvement of the design, and most importantly, I want to shout out to TSSL, their signal section of their city, went above and beyond for us on the things that they did and the cooperation that they had, because, you know, those signal, those intersections are both of ours at this point. And the cooperation that the city of Fresno had and the county of Fresno were stellar. So in addition to our local neighbors, we had a lot of help with our local and our state agencies. A project of this magnitude required a dependable funding source, right? And it could not be impossible without the help and leadership of our local and state agencies. Caltrans and Patreon Mafia is here, thank you, provided great assistance with authorization of the funds. The Fresno Council of Governments, thank you, Mike Leonardo, for being here. Oh, I'm sorry, you're, oh, gosh. Fresno Council of Governments, Measure C and L P P funds, and then the Fresno County Transportation Authority, thank you, Mike Leonardo, for being here, managed and provided our most impactful funding for Measure C. So, thank you for that. In addition, we had two other agencies. F M F C D provided their expertise and their knowledge and their kind of comments during the design of the storm drain infrastructure, and they were a vital part in all of the storm drain. And then Chris Lundeen and Lawrence Kamira, thank you for coming from F I D. We had to work with them in order to go under and over the Enterprise Canal Culvert just south of International Avenue. And you guys were great partners with that in dealing with the jack and bore pits and the scheduling of when we can do that, and you're very facilitated with that. So, I appreciate that. Another part, a big part, was that we impacted significantly Clovis Unified School District and the Clovis Community College. Only in a couple of months, because we all know what happened. But they were really good, though, at the beginning to really represent their needs, their concerns, but also their cooperation. And they showed their patience through the project, and we worked with them to strategize on, well, where should we go first? What is the most important thing for you? What kind of signage should we add to detour people around? And so, they were very informative on how we can help, you know, our stakeholders in the area. And with that, too, it's a good time to, I really want to appreciate, too, all the local businesses in the area that had to deal with the construction. They were very cooperative and very understanding, and we really appreciate all the local businesses that were in there. And this project could not be completed without our local utility companies. PG&E was a vital part of this project in doing pole relocations, undergroundings, new services, streetlight wiring, and they got the job done. And then A T and T had to move a couple of poles as well. They got the job done. And Comcast was a great, they helped a lot because there was a main fiber line that ran just the entire corridor. And, you know, digging for a sewer, you can imagine that that can be a problem sometimes. So, they were very cooperative and very proactive whenever we needed them. So, last but not least, we had a great contractor for this job. Yarbs Grading and Paving was very responsive. They communicated well with their subs and with us and worked with us on any sort of a change order or change in the design. Floyd Johnson had a lot of the work because of all of the underground work we did, and they are excellent in what they do. Fresno Concrete did all of the concrete improvements. Matco Electric did all of the wiring for the streetlights and the signal improvements, wiring. California Construction Surveying did all of the surveying. Safety Network did an awesome job with the traffic control. That is a, that's a wild area, and the different phases we had and different traffic control phases, they were really good at coming out there and doing what we needed to. And then Sierra Traffic Marking for all of the striping and signage. So, with that presentation, I just want to, again, say how much of an honor it was to build this project. And there may be some members in the crowd that might want to say something at the end. But with that, I would, I request that we move forward for a final acceptance, and if you guys have any questions, we're here for you.
Thank you. Any comments for staff, questions? Bob?
Thank you, Kevin, for your presentation. This is a question that might be more finance-related, so I don't know if Mike Leonardo, you might know this one. But it has to do with the reimbursement as development takes place on Willow Avenue. Since these were Measure C funds that were used, and it looks like S B one funds that were also used, as development takes place on the Clovis side, is there, we generally have development pay its own way. Are the people who are going to be developing now on the Clovis side of Willow Avenue not having to pay for that street widening? Does anybody know?
Yes, Councilmember Waylon, you got that right. This project is not included in the fee program for the very reason that it was funded by the Measure C.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And I want to comment, if I can, that it's nice to see some Clovis alumni here, like Mike and Steve.
They secretly like being back, too.
So, I might be able to elaborate a little bit on that. Measure C also has a R T M F program, which is Regional Transportation Mitigation Fee. And so, there's a transportation fee that's assessed on every agency throughout Fresno County that then goes to help offset part of the cost of Measure C projects. I better put it back on. I don't think there was R T M F funding on this particular project. It's not quite, you know, it's not a direct relationship, but it becomes one of our funding sources because it recognizes that Measure C projects do provide improvements that might otherwise be the responsibility of the developers along the corridors. So, indirectly, there is development money that went into this project or other projects like it, and every agency assesses it. So, Clovis is one of those agencies that collects the R T M F fee.
Lynn?
Want to talk?
I'd like to say it was an excellent presentation, and a fine example of a team effort. And if this was NASCAR with all of those different sponsors, you'd really look good, and your car would look great. Any other questions for staff before I open this to the public? Seeing none, I will open this to the public for comments. Anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
None.
Mr. Clerk, do we get any correspondence?
No.
Okay, I'll close public comment and come back to council for discussion or for action.
I'm happy to make the motion. I did just want to say, Kevin and Travis, it's really wonderful to see when you said, "Come to work for this city you love." That's why Clovis is special. So, thank you for that. And I'm sure behind that mask, Travis probably said the same thing.
Absolutely.
Say, "Good job. I knew you were there." But anyway, I just, I really, to like for your team, but that's why Clovis is different. So, thank you for that. And to all of the team members, I wish you could have a graphic and you could put it in the paper about when people say, "Can't you just build the new road?" That's why it's hard. It's not quite as simple. So, anyway, really well done. So, I will be happy to make the motion to accept the capital improvement project fifteen sixteen on Willow Avenue widening.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes four, zero, one absent. Item six, consider approval of a resolution of necessity to determine that the public interest and necessity require acquisition of portions of three properties for public purposes in authorizing proceedings in eminent domain for said properties located on the north side of Shaw Avenue, east of DeWolf Avenue, addresses three five eight five Shaw Avenue, previously eight one nine six East Shaw Avenue, A P N five five four dash zero five three dash three zero, three six four three Shaw Avenue, previously eight two four eight East Shaw Avenue, A P N five five four zero five three two eight, and three six nine three Shaw Avenue, previously eight three five zero East Shaw Avenue, A P N five five four dash zero five three dash twenty-five. Ryan Burnett is our presenter. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Staff would like to remind council, of course, this is a resolution of necessity hearing. Staff would like to remind council that the approval of the resolution of necessity requires four votes in favor. Since there's one council member missing, that would require a unanimous vote in favor tonight to pass. In general, when right-of-way negotiations come to an impasse with property owners, the city has the option to move forward with a condemnation action to acquire the needed right-of-way. The resolution of necessity before you is the first step in that process. Staff does not take these actions lightly and proceed in this direction only after considering all other options. For this item, the right-of-way is needed for the widening of Shaw Avenue from DeWolf to McCall Avenue. The Shaw project is a regional project funded with Measure C funds. The project will widen a two-mile segment of Shaw Avenue between DeWolf Avenue and McCall Avenue from two lanes to five to six lanes as planned. There are a total of thirty-eight properties along Shaw Avenue from which additional right-of-way was needed. In August of two thousand eighteen, the city entered into a contract with C P S I for acquisition services and then moved forward with appraisals. So, C P S I has been successful in obtaining the right-of-way of thirty of the properties. Five of the properties are continuing through the negotiation process, but they're getting close to contract. The right-of-way for the remaining three properties is the subject of this resolution of necessity this evening, so the three properties shown there. The three properties located along Shaw Avenue between DeWolf and Leonard are located between DeWolf and Leonard and located in the Loma Vista Community Center North, and all have commercial zoning. Here's, I'm going to go through individual exhibits for each property. This property is at thirty-five eighty-five Shaw Avenue. There's nine thousand five hundred eighty-three square feet of additional right-of-way that's needed. The owner is Roya Karim Konzam, and the, I don't know if this has a... So, as you can see, there's additional right-of-way that's needed. There's about fifty... It's around fifty-six or fifty-seven additional right-of-way that's needed along this frontage. And if you see this dashed line here, this portion of the right-of-way that's being acquired already is encumbered by two right-of-way easements. So, there is also, already right-of-way easements up to this point. We're purchasing an additional around twenty-four or so feet of right-of-way. And that'll give us about ten feet beyond the curb for this project. Now, on this property, this is thirty-six forty-three Shaw. There's ten thousand four hundred fifty-four square feet we will have to acquire. The owners are Mitra Kushru and Azeda Karim Konzam. Again, there's about fifty-eight or so feet of additional right-of-way that's needed. This dashed line here is the end of the existing easements, so there's existing easements all the way to that point, and we're acquiring the additional right-of-way. There's additional right-of-way that's needed for this section right here due to the underpass that will, that is being constructed under Shaw Avenue or the community centers. And then, there is, this property is at thirty-six ninety-four Shaw Avenue. There's eight thousand seven hundred twelve feet. Again, the property owners are John Thornburg and Rosemary Ping. Same situation here. There's thirty feet of easements that are already on the property, and we are obtaining about twenty-six to twenty-eight feet here additional. It will. This, there's a, kind of like a carport, a large carport, that will have to be removed because of PG&E, moving PG&E poles.
I was going to ask the same question that Bob. On the right side there, is that just driveway or? Looks like there's things, like cars or trucks or something parked there, and then, are those just two concrete driveways right there?
These, I can't remember if this is all concrete, but this is how these buildings get access, yes. Now, offers to purchase the right-of-way were sent to property owners around March of two thousand nineteen and based on appraisals obtained from the city, by the city. City staff and the consultants have been corresponding with parties, for the parties, for approximately one year. However, since around March or April, communication has stopped. Various attempts by staff and the consultants to reach the parties and their respective council have not been returned. All the parties are represented by attorneys. We are at a point where further delays may impact the schedule of the project. Again, the resolution of necessity is the first step in the condemnation process. In compliance with state law, notices of this hearing were sent to the property owners and their attorneys. Overall, these hearings are rare for the city, but city staff does its best to avoid any condemnation proceedings. Even with the approval of this resolution, city staff and the city attorney's office will continue to work with these property owners and their respective council to reach an agreement. That concludes staff's report. Staff and the city's right-of-way consultant are here tonight for questions, and then I saw some of the property owners in the audience also.
Thank you, Ryan. This is the, this action requires us to have an open public hearing on this. So, I will open the public hearing. Any member of the council wish to ask staff any questions on this? Bob?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the one that's going to be impacted by the underpass from the Loma Vista, basically, south Loma Vista north. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to just figure out where that is on my Google Maps here. So, what are the two main streets that's in between? All of these are between DeWolf and Leonard?
Correct.
Oh, that's helpful. Is it property two or is it property one, the one that's going to be impacted?
That's property two.
And the reason why we're going to be, then, kind of cutting in a little bit more to the western boundary is for that underpass to connect Loma Vista North and Loma Vista South. Is that right?
Correct.
And what is, what is going to be taking place on that, kind of the top portion that is extended into that property? What is going to be happening there?
A portion of that will be, there'll be, the underpass will be installed, and a portion of that will be the actual underpass structure.
So, coming up, there's going to be some cars that are going to be coming up right next to the home there?
Well, that, what we're doing is we're just constructing the underpass itself. We're not constructing this north-south street. So, at this point, there won't be any cars, you know, going north or south. The, it's currently being designed, our plan is to kind of mothball that until development takes place and a future, additional future improvements are put in with that north-south street.
And then just west of that location, it's all vacant land. I mean, that next parcel is just vacant, so there's no structures that are impeded there. there. I know that the next lot over has a home on it. I don't know if that's represented in anything that you have. So just that, that lot that is going to be just to the west of number two, the APN and Dean zero-five-three dash two-eight.
I don't know, it's kind of small. But yes, yeah, there's a flag lot on that side. But you, you would, you would see that same thing reflected on the other side too.
I see. So, so show me property one again.
It's property one.
So property one is, there's vacant land between property one and property two.
Correct.
And we're going to be entering into a little bit more right of way, kind of that L-shaped geometry that you had there, yeah.
Yeah.
But we're not having to do that on property one?
Not on property one, but on the property next, just to the west of the, of the one that's shown currently here, it'll be just kind of flopped. So if you flop that over, mirror it, there is also this same piece of right of way that has to be taken out because of the, the underpass will, so that's like half the underpass, kind of reflected.
I see. So on the vacant land, you're just going to flop it over and then you'll have enough space there?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And, you know, focusing still on the necessity here, if it is not going to work for us to shift anything over so that the, the only one that has the additional property taken out of, kind of that additional northern piece, we can't make that all happen just on that vacant piece of property?
Right. Yeah, I think it goes down to the, this is basically the center of that, that quarter section. And the way everything is aligning, all the streets and everything that's being designed and, and there's been some parcel maps that have already been done to the south of this.
I see.
And so the way everything is aligning, it's already, it's a little, little late to start to redesign the streets.
So we've already, we've already made our infrastructure and track map plans that have been adopted at least based on the cars coming up where we have that extension to the north there on that diagram.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Well, then I, then I'll speak. Ryan, looking at this particular slide, how much space is there between, is that, I'm assuming that's a residence?
Yes.
Or is that an outbuilding?
It's a residence.
Residence. How much between there and the top of the, I guess that, that little jag that comes out?
Uh, there's, I mean, if you look at, I don't have, sorry, I don't have those on there, but.
Because it's showing, it looks like it's twenty feet to the other ones, so that would probably ten feet?
Yeah, it's less than, it's less than twenty, so probably around ten, fifteen feet, yeah.
And, and on the, on the north side of the street where this, where this line, you know, the blue line coming across is, what would that be? A block light wall? What, what kind of, what would these people end up looking at, I guess, if, if we, this happened?
Uh, right here, you mean?
Uh, no, a little bit further up there. Where would they end up, what are they dealing with?
It's, well, it's, it's, and maybe Mike, you could kind of, there's about, there's going to be about a three-foot or a four-foot grade difference, but to what the, what's going to be there, what they're going to be looking at.
So, so the reason for that additional right of way is for sloping away from the structure, which is going to be at that, at the, at the point between this property and the property to the west, it's going to be about three to four feet, I think Fernando said, above the existing grade. So it's our intent to install the structure and we will backfill against the outside of the structure and mothball it until such time as, as we can go back and construct that road or development builds that road. So the north, the north part of that is basically the bottom of the slope, sloping away from the structure itself.
What, what kind of structure are we talking, retaining wall? What are we talking?
It's going to be, it's going to be a bridge that can accommodate two lanes plus pedestrian pathways on both sides going north and south under Shaw Avenue.
Any other questions for staff? I will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address counsel on this item? Any member of the public in council chambers? Seeing none, I will, I will, do anybody on the web?
There are none.
And Mr. Clerk, other than the letters that are attached to the staff report or any other public comments?
Correct.
None. Okay, I will close public comment and come back to council for discussion or fraction.
I think the, I mean, I think the most important thing about these, we don't do them very often, to your point, is the conversation, the negotiation will continue. This is just to sort of start the process. Don't ever like it when it comes to this point because people have invested lots of time, but I think just to move it along and to keep the construction on track, I, I'll make a motion that we determine that this is in the public interest and to require the acquisition of the portions of those three properties outlined in the staff report.
Hold second. If you have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. It's four to zero with one absent and I will close the public hearing. Item number seven, consider approval of a resolution, adoption of a resolution amending the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan and amending the fiscal year 2020-21 Housing and Community Development Budget to increase the funds by six hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Heidi Crabtree is our presenter. Heidi?
Mayor, council members, thank you for your time this evening. The purpose of this presentation is to hold a public hearing to amend Clovis's CDBG 2019-20 Annual Action Plan. As you know, Clovis received from HUD an initial CDBG CV award of four hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. Those funds were divided between two new programs, the Senior Meals Program and the Emergency Housing Payment Program. Both have been very successful. The purpose of the housing payment program is to provide up to three months of rent and mortgage payments for low-income households who have had a COVID-related income loss with the assistance being paid directly to the applicant's landlord or mortgage lender. With the first round of funding for the program, we were able to assist forty-six households with funding being exhausted within three weeks of launching the program. We came back to you in September to amend our 2019-20 Action Plan to provide approximately a hundred and forty-eight thousand of additional funding to the program. With those funds, we were able to assist forty households. All funds have been expended. HUD was notified, HUD notified Clovis by letter on September seventeenth, 2020, that it would be receiving an allocation of CDBG CV three funds in the amount of six hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. I am proposing that Clovis commit these additional funds to the Emergency Housing Payment Program. It is estimated that the funds could assist an additional one hundred and thirty households. I currently have seventy-six viable applications on hold for hun, for funding. It is staff's recommendation that the 2019-20 Annual Action Plan be amended to add the six hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars in CDBG CV funds to the program year and direct the use of those funds to the Emergency Housing Payment Program. In addition, it is recommended that the 2020-21 HCD budget be amended to add the CDBG CV three funds. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Heidi. Any questions for staff? Lynn?
I just have a question, Heidi. Did I hear you write that some of the initial funds was what we used to pay for the Senior Meal Program that we heard about last week?
That's correct. Of the four hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and fourteen, two hundred thousand went to the Emergency Housing Payment Program and the remainder went to the Senior Meals Program.
And so in this case, the additional six hundred and two thousand dollars, you're recommending that all of it go to housing?
That's correct.
Yes. And did I, is the senior program out of funding, the Meals Program portion? Have we used up all that money?
So the last update we did was on Friday, I believe, and it's, they had about fifteen thousand dollars left. The intention is to wind the program down at the end of this month.
So I think my question is, why? I mean, was there any discussion about sort of keeping that going a bit longer? COVID-nineteen is, you know, for seniors is probably going to get more trying as the holidays come along and whatnot. Is there any, was there any discussion about allocating any additional funds to keep that going a bit longer, maybe? Just what was the thinking behind that?
So I, I, that was a decision that was primarily made by, by General Services. They felt, from what I understand, that it was time to wind the program down. We certainly would have been open to looking at a division of those funds had they been, had there been a desire to keep the program going.
I'd love to understand a little bit more about that, and here comes someone.
In your mask, you all kind of can't tell you who's going to stand up. Tell me about that, Andy.
So we have been talking for some time over the Senior Meals Program and its viability. We had reduced interest from kind of all parties involved going forward, which included the volunteers, restaurants, and even some of the recipients of the meals. So the decision was made to begin winding the project down as we move forward, and then we received an additional allocation of funds, and we had a backlog of need in that category. So that's how the decision was arrived at.
That's, I mean, thank you. The video from last week didn't give any indication that there was any waning interest from any of those parties that you described, so I had a different impression in my mind that maybe we could keep it going. It seems like restaurants might be glad to have that work or, you know, some additional revenue, but, but if not, then that's fine. That's all fair.
But that, that was when we talked to all the partners on the project. That was where they were at and they were happy with it winding down over the next month to six weeks when we began the conversation.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't know that I understood that last response. In six weeks, what?
When we started talking about six weeks ago about the program and where it was at, we started getting feedback that there was interest in seeing the program wound down logically over some time, and that's when the end of October was arrived at, based on the interest from the different parties that were involved.
So the presentation was last, last week was, you know, focused on, this is the success that we had as a result, and now we're kind of putting a bow on it and wrapping it up, and congratulations to all those who participated, kind of a presentation.
Yeah, it was a very, you know, great success, very big thank you. Took a lot of people to make it happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Andy.
Andy, before you go, in the event that we get hit with another closure, would, do you think that, that that would change the industry's wish to participate in a Meals Program? I mean, I, I see this as something that would, you know, I mean, I don't know, maybe we just hold back some funds just in case we have to adjust this. Do you think they would, that, that their added, their wish to participate would change?
That very well could happen. We don't have applications on file right now that would use up all the funds, and we could come back to council with an amendment at a very short timeframe to reallocate funds like we're doing tonight, but for that program.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Bob, go ahead.
Thank you. Is there an expectation that there'll be a CV four coming through? CDBG CV four?
So it's unknown at this time. The original allocation of CDBG funds that HUD received through the CARES Act, this was to be the final round. As far as I know, but with the new stimulus package, it's a possibility, but we certainly don't have any details about a CV four package coming.
So the CV three was wrapping up what was coming through, the additional or the, the, I guess, the first two CARES Act funds, and has finally made its way to the city of Clovis for us to use this in this way? Is that right? And if there is a new CARES Act of some kind, then there might be additional, like a CV four of some kind? Is that the idea?
Yeah. If, if funds are allocated in the future stimulus package, it could come in that form or it could be something different.
Okay.
There was different rules related to this funding source for the CDBG COVID funds that we were able to operate these programs with. That could happen again, but right now that's just, just works.
Congratulations, I get it. Thank you.
So I want to go back to the mayor's idea. I think that's a good idea. Is it easier to set aside to take out a hundred thousand dollars or some number now or, and hold on to it for a period of, I don't know, ninety days or sixty days, whatever the number would be? Or would it be easier to approve this and have you come back? I just don't want, if you, if you end up spending all of this and then there's another closure or, I don't know, something else occurs, I wouldn't have wanted to commit all of the housing money. And I, and I guess this is a, this is a sort of a rabbit hole, but I feel like there's other volunteers in our city maybe that could, if, if those volunteers were weary, but the two women in the back that cried when it was over, like this is, they looked forward to this, like not quite, that's not quite resonating with me that the volunteers were retired. But I had a conversation with somebody, one of our CERT volunteers, who are lost without CERT, you know, there's, there's, there's nothing happening and so they're a little bit lost. So is there other volunteers in our city we could engage to help with this? All that being said, I, I, I don't know which is easier, holding back now or approving it all for housing and then coming back and amending it if, if the need arises?
So if we don't allocate all the funds tonight, we'll have to come back to allocate the funds through an action plan amendment process like you're doing tonight. That's definitely within council's decision-making. You can do that, no problem. The other option is to allocate all the funds and we can provide a check-in on the expenditure of those funds and where we're at with council to get direction on coming back to amend our action plan if that's the desire or not need to. So I would really leave it up to your desire, the mechanics of preserving the funds. If you direct us to come back or to observe and see how much money is left, you know, we will honor that and wouldn't need the action plan process to limit us per se, but we, you could just set a certain amount aside for this program and we would come back later with either additional funds for the housing program or something else, including the Meal Program.
Any other question? How much, if we were to direct staff to hold back or report back to us, how much money did we put out on the Senior Meals Program that we would want to, like, hold in reserve?
So the original allocation, Heidi correcting us, two hundred and forty thousand and some change?
Yes, two forty-one, two fourteen.
Three hundred and forty?
Two, two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars.
And that lasted us from basically mid-May until end of October. So probably a hundred thousand dollars would be a sufficient amount that, we were anticipating more seniors to want the Meals than initially when we came to you last spring. We thought the program would only last till like July fifteenth, based on the funding we had available, so I think a hundred thousand dollars would provide us an adequate resource to launch a program that has some longevity to it going forward.
And then if there's no business in Meals, then we can just, you would come back and ask to put it into emergency housing and we just go.
And forgive me, but I think a third option would be, and it wasn't noticed this way, so Heidi might tell me I can't do this, but I'm going to ask anyways. If the action tonight is to amend the action plan to add funding to the Senior Meal Planning Program directly at a hundred thousand dollars and the housing program at the balance, we could do that as well and then come back if those funds aren't expended, as we would plan to, but I think we would need to renotice that, yeah. So we would need to come back to make that happen.
But it's a short noticing period and because of the nature of the funds and the urgency to get them out, it's just a five-day comment period. We could come back pretty quickly.
I have one more question.
Absolutely.
Senior Center have any plans to reopen anytime soon?
My understanding is that they are starting to offer, and now as part of the decision-making process, they're starting to offer some classes outdoors, doing process, they're starting to offer some classes outdoors, doing a variety of things, and they're using staff that was running this program for that effort.
But no meals there?
No, they're not having any meals. The center inside is not open. They just have some outdoor exercise classes, art, et cetera.
So my question should have been more specific. There are no plans to restart the senior meal program inside the senior center at this moment?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Mayor, if I may, Shawna is online, and she wants to comment.
Yes, Shawna?
Here we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. The meals are provided by a grant from the Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging. They have no plans through the rest of this fiscal year to continue the meal program. We have no contract with them, and they told us they're not planning on doing a contract, so that would be until June. Now, just keeping in mind too, the meal program that we're providing for the seniors now only delivers a meal once a week to each of those 700-plus seniors. There is also a home delivery meal program available through FM AAA for those seniors who have no other way to get their meals, and they're, they're in a constrained situation. So FM AAA has a home-delivered meal program where they deliver a week's worth of frozen meals and some fresh fruit and dairy. Once a week, they deliver that.
Is that, is that a cost to the senior, or is that paid with FM AAA dollars from some other federal source, or?
They have two different programs. One is a donation-based program, and that one, you have to meet minimum qualifications for income and have nobody else to help you. The other one is the same meals, but you pay for them.
Any other questions for Shawna? Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you. I'm still here if you need me.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I do have a question for Shawna.
Shawna?
I'm here.
Sorry, it just took me, my brain a little bit to figure it out. So, so our CDBG funds for the seniors' meals program from CV3, excuse me, CV2, were given to Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging, and then they handled the distribution of the food, or did we utilize Fresno Madera AAA for the distribution? I mean, I'm, I'm stuck on understanding the role between the CV2 funds and FM AAA.
There is no role between the two. The City of Clovis spent that money on staffing and to restaurants directly. FM AAA, what they did is, when they closed the program, they converted all of their in-center meals to home-delivered for those who signed up.
I see.
There's two concurrent programs. But if you were accepting the home-delivered meals from FM AAA, you were not eligible to get our CDBG meals, because that would be double-dipping into a federal pot.
I see. So the comment relating to FM AAA, or the answer related to Lynn's question, and your answer being related to FM AAA, was that they will still have an opportunity to receive meals through FM AAA, even if our Clovis program and the senior meals program from our senior center is not operational?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open this to the public. Any member of the public in chambers wish for us to counsel on this item. Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
There are none.
Mr. Clark, could be any correspondence?
No.
I will close public comments and come back to council for discussion. I, I would like to hold back $100,000, just so that staff comes and says, hey, this is where we're at, because I, I'd hate to see some debacle happen, and we're stepping and fetching for funds to give to senior meals.
I would agree. I just wonder, Andy, so the restaurants that participated in the program last week, how many restaurants participated in that round that you?
So we had over 50 restaurants participate over the life of the program. It was significant. Toward the end, we started getting less and less, so it was harder to get the meals dialed in, as they were having more success in their typical line of work, which is encouraging.
That's, I mean, that's a lot of restaurants, I'm sure, yeah. I, I agree with this. I I'll make that motion. How about that? You want to make a motion?
I've got a question.
No.
Bob?
So the, the purpose of our receiving the CV3 funds, actually all these CV funds, was to get it out as quickly as we could. Will this hurt our scoring in the future if we don't get these funds out quickly? Does anybody want to comment on that?
We, we don't receive a score. It's not a competitive program, but we do have a timeliness test that we have to meet in April of each year, where we can't have a certain amount of money on hand that we haven't spent yet. And that would be the only issue, is if we didn't, you know, have a significant portion of these funds spent by that time. You know, that, it could be a little bit of an issue, but it's not something that would keep us from getting future CDBG funding.
Okay. And how many, so it took us a few months to go through the emergency housing program funds, and it was a less amount of money. And now this would be, if we go with the, the $500,000, which I think is kind of where we're, we're headed, if, if we haven't gone through that $500,000 by April, and we've allocated it to this emergency housing program, I am a little concerned that that might reflect poorly on us. I mean, do you, do you anticipate having any issue going through these funds? I know that you said we've got, you know, I guess pending 70-something?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. And so that would only, and this would provide funding, if we went with a full $602,000, that would provide funding for how much? What was your figure?
It's estimated about 130 households.
Okay. I mean, I, I think just generally, it's good to hold funds back if we, in a, in an environment in which we don't know what's going to happen next, because I want to keep that agility so that we can move funds. And I know we'd be able to move funds anyway, we could always amend it if we needed to, but holding funds back seems to make sense to me.
Maybe if we have them report back the first meeting in January?
I would say like 60 days, yeah.
Yeah, because staff would need a way to quickly expend that money if, if they had to.
And if it looks like there's no interest come January, and you've only spent $35,000 for meals, that would still give Heidi three months to spend it by April on any remaining families or something.
Well, I think that the way that the, the motion is going, is going, is that we're going to set aside $100,000, not for anything, not for the wheels, the meals on, I call it meals on wheels, but it's senior meals program. So they would have to come in with enough time to be able to spend that $100,000, whatever that is, and I don't know if January's going to, and you got an April deadline, I don't know if that's going to work. But you tell us. I mean, when do you, when do you think you need to know how to spend that hundred grand?
So I would recommend is that we allocate, if it's agreed upon by council, the half million dollars to the housing program, then allow us to come back, work with staff with a potential another amendment to continue the senior meals program. We'll come back to you with that, and we can talk internally amongst staff about how that could roll out, and if it looks feasible, then we'll have that item before you. And if not, by January, we'll come back and add funds to the emergency housing program.
So it is setting aside for the meals?
It is setting aside.
Not, not in the scope of my ideas.
That would be the process, as I see it. We would allocate half a million dollars to the housing program right now. That would take care of the families that have immediate needs. That should be plenty of funds to help us through the end of the calendar year. And then we would start working on, coming back to you with an amendment for adding the hundred and some change to the senior meals program, if it looks like it's a viable project. If not, we would come back and have the conversation about putting it into the housing program and the demand there.
Okay. There's, you see no third program out there that may be necessary for that hundred grand?
So when the CDBG CV funds came out initially, we looked at many programs that could help our local businesses. Some of those ideas were shot down. They were a little too creative for HUD. Not saying much, but...
See, that's a really low bar, just saying. With great love to HUD.
So we, you know, we were looking at programs to help businesses and help our households that were in need, and that's where these programs were born out of. Since the meal program was helping restaurants and persons in need, it was a great opportunity. With that, there could be other things that come up as HUD starts adjusting and getting more creative, but I'm not, I don't see anything that's out there with the amount of funds we have available to us. It's going to be much different than what we have on the table right now.
Well, I'll leave it to the motion maker, however they want to make it, and I'm sure I'll be in agreement.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we, we adopt a resolution amending the 2019-2020 Annual Action Budget and amending the fiscal year 2020-21 Housing and Community Development Budget to increase funds by $602,534, with $500,000 of those funds to go to the emergency housing, and $102,534 to be set aside for senior meals program. Staff will report back to council the first meeting of January for discussion on whether that, those items, whether that $102,534 will be allocated to, continue to be allocated towards senior meals, or placed into the emergency housing fund.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight is consider introduction of ordinance OA 2020-003, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Clovis, amending Section 9.18.050 and adding Section 9.104.120 of the Clovis Municipal Code relating to the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Allocation. Oh, I'm sorry, this item is going to be continued? Is that correct?
Correct.
Guess I should have run it all the way through. We're going to go to administrative items. These are items, administrative items are matters on the regular city council agenda other than public hearings. Item number nine, consider approval, authorize the city manager to execute a disposition and development agreement with Habitat for Humanity Greater Fresno Area for construction of affordable housing at 1403 Fourth Street and 1421 Fourth Street in Clovis's Stanford Edition. And Heidi is our presenter. Heidi?
And before we start, I'm going to recuse myself from hearing this item. I don't have any financial interest in this property anymore, but I once did, since it was the Floris Homestead at one point. So just so we are above board, I'm going to recuse myself.
And then we did not need a motion to continue the item, agenda item number eight? It's just, there's no objection to it, and so it's just considered to be continued.
Correct. I think the noticing was for the 19th as it was, so...
Okay. Thank you. Or six, yeah, okay, got it. Thank you.
Heidi?
Mayor, council members, thank you again for your time. The purpose of this presentation is to discuss a potential partnership between Clovis and Habitat for Humanity Greater Fresno Area to develop two affordable homes at 1403 and 1421 Fourth Street in the Stanford Edition. Clovis has a long and successful history of partnerships with Habitat for Humanity, with 24 homes being constructed. The most recent partnership culminated in the construction of three affordable single-family homes in the Stanford Edition, two of which you can see here. The first is located at Fifth and Stanford, and the second is one of the two homes located at Fourth and Sunnyside. The city recently had an opportunity to purchase the lots at 1403, 1421 Fourth Street, seen on this map outlined in red. The lots had a single-family home on it, and it was determined the home would be demolished to make room for two new affordable homes, plus an easement for the widening of Sunnyside Avenue. The lots were purchased using housers, housing successor agency set-aside funds. Once the purchase was made, the home was demolished, and these are the lots as they look today. Habitat for Humanity reached out to staff with a strong interest in building the two affordable homes that would be located here. By approving the disposition and development agreements for these two lots, it will allow Habitat for Humanity to move forward with the construction of two single-family affordable homes. It is Habitat's intention that the partner families selected for these two homes be veteran families. The agreements will also secure Clovis's investment in the use of the property by locking in affordability restrictions for a minimum of 55 years, thus ensuring the homes will be occupied by low-income households during that time. It is staff's recommendation that city council authorize the city manager to enter into disposition and development agreements with Habitat for Humanity Greater Fresno Area for the construction of affordable housing at 1403 Fourth Street and 1421 Fourth Street. I do want to point out that a letter of support from Matthew Grundy, Habitat, oh, sorry, Matthew Grundy, Habitat for Humanity's executive director, was placed on the dais for you. He would have normally been here to speak to you directly, but today is his birthday. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Heidi. Any questions for staff? Bob?
Thank you. So these two homes would be side by side on Fourth Street? Am I hearing that correctly?
That's correct.
And then they would back into the alley that is between Fourth and Gibson?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can't think of a better place to spend your birthday than here, so I'm not sure. I just, I wanted to comment, I'm going to channel my inner Vaughn, which is not at all tuned into him, but I think, I'm not nearly that nice of a human, but I just, I think Habitat for Humanity's been a really wonderful partner with City of Clovis, and I just, I think the stories of families getting, you know, working for this home has really made a huge difference in our community and for those families. And to Joe's family, I think it's a very sweet tribute to how his own family started here. So I think it's got, like, it's a wonderful project, so. I want to practice the inner Vaughn. How'd I do? Not nearly as good. I tried. Like, marginally okay.
I, yeah, I, this is a great project. It gives two families an opportunity to have a beautiful home in Clovis. It resolves our Sunnyside project going north, our Sunnyside Street going northbound. This is a, it's a real win-win. I'm going to congratulate staff. Heidi, I, I've had a lot of people over the last year or so, especially people who struggled in the, during the COVID thing, talk about how great our staff has worked with, especially for the housing funding. I had one lady tell me that the City of Clovis was the only agency that paid off. Of all the things that she put in for our housing assistance program, was the only one that, that helped her, and she was very, very happy about that. Any other questions for staff?
I would say the other thing Vaughn would have said, he didn't help me out, was, I think he was working with the Memorial District to provide a flag to each home. Is that right? I think he was doing that. And so in the case of veterans, I think that's even sweeter. That was the rest of what he would have said.
Maybe we'll get a flagpole donated. We'll work on that.
There you go.
If there's no other questions for staff, we'll open this up to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item in chambers? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clark, any written correspondence?
No.
I will close public comments and come back to council for action.
I'll move for approval.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three, one absent, one abstaining. Let me knock on the door?
He's probably locked himself in again.
Thank you.
Let's see where we got here. Come to council items. Item 10, consider approval of a resolution in support of Proposition 20, Reducing Crime and Keeping the Food Safe Act. Luke is our presenter. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proposition 20 is endorsed by the League of California Cities, and they have requested cities adopt resolutions supporting this proposition. Before you, the purpose of the resolution is that under current state law, many crimes that most of us would consider violent, things like domestic violence, date rape, sex trafficking of children, and assault with a deadly weapon, are classified as nonviolent. Under the nonviolent classification, offenders of these crimes are eligible for early release from prison. Under the nonviolent classification, offenders of these crimes are eligible for early release from prison. Uh, Proposition 20 would reclassify these crimes, uh, uh, and prevent people from being eligible for early release when convicted of these crimes. Uh, Proposition 20 would also create two new categories with increased penalties for serial theft. Uh, this is for just continuous theft cases, and organized retail theft. We have seen, um, I think we had that at the Dick's Sporting Goods a few months back, um, where it is a concerted action, it's not just a simple theft, shoplifting here and there. It's, it's a group of people that come in and clean off shelves and take off. Uh, uh, and, and those are currently subject to some of the, the lower penalties. This would create, uh, two new categories for those two items and prevent the early release of those, uh, offenders as well. Uh, so that's the, the resolution before you. Once again, it is endorsed by the League of Cities, and they have requested that cities adopt this resolution. So that's my presentation. I'm available for comments.
Thank you, Luke. Any questions for Luke? Lynn?
This, this is one I was asking, this one was hard, this was hard to follow, like the language is sort of convoluted. I wasn't sure, like, was I voting yes or no? So from, uh, law enforcement, which is my remaining three colleagues here, what's the interface between this and like Prop 47? This is to sort of clean up some of the mess from Prop 47? Is that, I mean, or the, is that mess, if I'm not sure, but you know what I mean?
Prop, Prop 47 was the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, which had nothing to do with safety neighborhoods or schools.
How did that work out?
Yeah, I, I.
Not good.
I'm sorry, Jose, go ahead.
And yes, it, there's loopholes, and, and like Luke was saying, this created a criminal enterprise because of, because some crimes aren't felonies. The criminals have, have learned that if they do a series of these crimes, there's no accountability. So what this proposition does is stop that. And so that serial theft that we've seen throughout the state of California, and these, 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 uh, groups have gone up and down the state, and they, what they've learned is that once you know how to steal from one store, they go to all the different, the same stores throughout California and steal from that same store, since they know how they, they work. And it, it's, it's up and down the state, and, and no one can, there, no prosecutor can prosecute because it's just one theft.
How does it work? How does Prop 20, like, take, like, supersedes Prop 47? Or how, what's the mechanics of how that works? We already have Prop 47 that says it's all good and how bad it's, if your neighborhood's safe. But now we have Prop 20 come along. How, what's the mechanics of that, just out of curiosity?
So my understanding is that, um, Prop 20 modifies some of the same, some of the language that was modified by, by Prop 47 when it comes to identifying, um, what counts as these various crimes. Uh, I don't know, Bob probably knows more about it than I do.
Yeah, so it's, um, what Prop 47 did is it amended the California Penal Code. And so this is also going to be amending the California Penal Code. Um, so it's, it's really just, um, striking out language and adding in language that is pushing back against some of what Prop 47 did. It's not eliminating all of what Prop 47 did. I would also add that it's going to be modifying some of the parole standards that are out there presently. It's a little frustrating for us when we have a parole hearing, um, in the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Um, the parole commissioners are pretty limited as to what they can consider when you make any determination as to whether somebody should receive parole. Um, and this Proposition 20 allows them to consider more broadly some of the aspects associated with that individual. And, uh, we'd like to have that opportunity to make those broader arguments as opposed to just being limited, um, as we were as a result of some, I think it was Prop 57, which, um, limited the considerations for the parole commissioners. So, uh, if I, if I may, I'm, I'm also going to just kind of add, uh, you know, we always like to focus on the nexus between these propositions and what's impact on the city of Clovis. And certainly, I think as a result of the League of California Cities asking us to, um, you know, take a position on this, um, proposition, we certainly should do that, and the timing seems to be right. Uh, but I would also, uh, point out something that Luke and I were just talking about earlier, that, um, that Safe Neighborhoods Act, which was Proposition 47. Uh, the irony, of course, is that when we were talking about the neighborhood that was impacted by the folks that were not, um, being respectful to their neighbors, uh, there had been many attempts, um, and I would say arrests made of the owner of that property for crimes which were going, would have been a felony before Prop 47. But because of Prop 47, they were just a misdemeanor, and the person was getting released, um, pretty regularly because it was just a misdemeanor. And so, um, Proposition 47 actually did just the opposite of what it said in its heading. It created an unsafe neighborhood as a result of that action. Now, Proposition 20 is not going to roll back those same, um, crimes, but I think that it is, um, this is an editorial comment here, but the attorney general has the opportunity to, um, title what these propositions should be. And for the attorney general to call that the, um, Safe Neighborhoods Act was, um, I, I think a bald-faced lie. And, uh, now to complicate the wording of the title of this particular Proposition 20, um, it seems in my mind, and I'll just say it, it seems to be intentionally confusing so that people will just vote no on it. So, um, thank you for, uh, letting me beat up on the attorney general for the state of California for that moment.
Well, I appreciate it. I was confused. I really didn't, I couldn't figure out what I was trying to read. So, I mean, and I, so anyway, thank you for that help.
And, you know, I trust the science, and one of, one thing that Prop 20 does too is it expands the collection of DNA from, from certain crimes. And, you know, it always helps to have a broader DNA database. And we've seen that it helps in to, to solve crimes down the road.
Thank you. Very helpful.
I can, I can speak to that directly. I arrested a serial rapist in Clovis in 1989, and he is going to be going to trial in Texas for a murder in 1988 that they made him on DNA on. Um, he never should, never should have been released from, from, he got 45 years in California and got released in less than, I think, 20. Uh, and it was, I mean, a very bad case. So, um, if we can make sure that we, we do take care of these people in the future, that would be really a good thing. Any other questions for Luke on this? I will open this to the public. Any member of the public in chambers wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clark, did we get any written comments?
We did not.
Okay, I will close public comments and come back to council for action.
I move that we, um, support Proposition 20.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero, with one absent. Uh, now, I, I just passed this out. This is item 11, consider, uh, a design of a Clo, City of Clovis challenge coin. Tonight would have been a great opportunity to, to give the, you know, to give our, some of our partners, especially on the Willow thing, a, uh, a nice coin. Uh, I had purchased some similar to this for presentation to people who, you know, come to council and, you know, are Eagle Scouts. I think it's a nice, it's a nice gesture. Um, there, there is a, a, you know, cost to this, of course. Um, I mean, and there would be a difference between, you know, people could purchase them at cost from the city, uh, or they could be given out as gifts, you know, from, for purposes in the council chambers or for other things. I just think it's a, it's a nice step in that direction. I'd open, you know, comments, questions?
So is it, is it this on one side, this on the other? Or is, is the one you had the other night have the flag?
Right.
Or is this one with the flag?
Right. They, they, actually, there is, there's, there's two parts.
Heads and tails.
Yeah, there's heads and tails. The difference between the coin we used last week, which has this, it would just be this side and the City of Clovis side.
So no flag?
No flags, Luke.
Okay. So the PM, I don't know what that is, is it an S, CG7, that color? I don't know if it's gray or what color that, that, on the, on the Clovis logo side.
You know, I, I, I use my, my cheap printer at home for this. Um, I, I think it's a silver. I think it's silver with the, obviously you have gold over top. Um, and the, uh, um, obviously the rider has different tones in it.
So it, it's silver. It's going to look silver. Is it a silver, lacquered silver?
That's a good question, Jose.
What is it?
You know, we, we could.
What, what is?
Right.
The design of our logo, did it? Did it? Did, did we have a standard for our logo?
Yes, we, we do have a, a standard, uh, tone for that, and we could provide that data to whoever the manufacturer is to ensure that it's the, the proper color.
Because I would say we use the city's standard. Uh, but how about, how about the rest? Is it gold?
Uh, I don't know. I believe our city's standard is, it's a white background with, uh, I believe, what, white or black letter?
There's actually, there's actually two. There's one that has a red.
Yes. Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm open to, I'm the wrong, my wife tells me I'm the wrong person to pick colors.
But is this going to be a city thing, a city bought thing?
Yes, the city would purchase it. Um, I, I mean, for rest of the council members, we could purchase them at cost, you know, and it wouldn't be free. Um, and we would give these to members of the public, city employees could purchase them if they so chose.
Did, we never put together a, a standard, a color... But did, did we, did we, what do you call it? Memorialize it? That it would be this, this, and this, and this?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And the only woman I can say my own vote about that.
None of us are going to laugh at that.
So the city does have a style guide for the use of its logo. In that style guide, it includes, you know, the logo and its form on the screen with different coloring. It also calls out the Pantone colors, which are what the industry uses, so they can actually put the right color into the product they're making. Because things can be different compared to what a computer screen looks like. So that calls it out. So that is available. And we have three logos. Um, there's the traditional one, and then there's also a, a square, and then another circle that is more Americana-looking with some deeper reds and blues in it. Uh, that's, I'm not even talking about lightbulb. This is all the, the horse with the star.
No, but if we use, use that one, if we use the, what do we call it? It's not bonkability anymore, what is it? You still call it bonkability?
I have a question about the cost. So, uh, it's not really, we're not adding all of the stuff. If you bought a thousand, it's fifty, eight hundred dollars.
Correct.
So they added them all up to be sixteen thousand dollars, but it's really just fifty, thirty, you bought a thousand.
Correct, and, and then the price goes, goes down as you buy more. Uh, we're, we're saving on the die fee, um, which is like $250. The, the, the reason that I like this, this City of Clovis side is it kind of looks like a penny. I, I thought that was a nice touch, but, uh, I will defer to the group on that. They are big. Big old penny. And, and, you know, with, uh, I, I don't anticipate us giving away a lot of these. They would be purchased, uh, and so whatever we spent, we probably would get at least, I would, I would guess, 70% back on, on purchases.
They're all offered? What's, what's the whole program? What's the whole, what's your vision?
Uh, well, actually, I will probably be coming back first meeting of December, hopefully, with, uh, with the flag.
No, 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 but for this, for, for the.
Oh. Well, we, we would, it would be, uh, gifts, you know, for people, like tonight, we could give the county, the city, uh, people who, people who came, um, Boy Scouts doing presentations, special awards, things like that. And, and quite frankly, those are the things where I would be giving those personally to people, uh, not out of the city stash. So we'd have the city stash and your personal stash.
Well, if it could be the city, I'd like it to look like a ci, the city standard.
I'm okay with that.
On, on the, on the city side.
Right.
That, that, I like the, the United States.
So, so we.
If we're going to use that one.
We could direct staff to work with the manufacturer, giving them the city standard, and they would make that work based on that.
If you're going to use enamel, it's going to require those rims where they drop the enamel into it. So it, it's going to need raised letters, and so, so the center could be hollowed out like he had. It, it could be hollowed with, but then it wouldn't have, our, our color is what? What, what's the standard for? The center around.
Uh, I believe ours is white. The background is white behind.
Like a white enamel, it would be a white enamel with gray, a gray. But, so it could be gray with the gold if we kept it, if we kept it. It could be like, similar to that, only with, if we keep it more standard.
But there's also the one that has the red background.
But they're, but they're all white inside.
Right. I just think a flash color would be nice rather than gray unless we made it.
We have a style guide available to show on the screens if you'd like. Carrie was going to help me out with that.
And that's part of our standard?
Yeah. So this is a document the staff uses when using the logo. So that is the Americana, the one we use, often use for tourism-related things and kind of fun. We have a pin, a lapel pin that looks like that right now that is handed out. I think we do. And then there's also the city standard logo, which may be appearing soon.
I agree.
And now, per the style guide, that would be an appropriate use of it. And then there's the standard city logo, which apparently that's a low-resolution. Yeah, and that, it was designed for those kinds of things. The graphic artist that did it made it for that use. There's also a square one, which wouldn't be a good fit for this.
Bob, you shouldn't play poker, just so you know.
The, the only thing, I, so people love these challenge coins. I mean, I, it's, um, I, I mean, I, I'm always amazed at it. I mean, if I have one to give, they really like to receive them. The, uh, my only comment is that if we're going to have the star on it, I'd like it to be a gold star.
Yeah, that's good.
All right.
They, they, if we give them the stuff, they can do pretty much darn near anything.
I would, but I like the one on my left. Stage, right, how do you say that? Stage right?
So, stage right, if you're looking out at the audience, stage right, you're going to be here.
So, I agree, with a gold star.
Stage right with a gold star.
Okay, so, that, with that, with a gold star.
We were given both of those, uh, one being less detailed for smaller-scale applications, it's easier to actually produce. And the one with more detail, uh, so it just depends on the application, how good it looks.
This one may not be as easy for them to reproduce.
No, they, they can do it.
Okay, I'll tell them.
Wait, I, there are, there are other vendors, trust me.
No, no, I, I know, I know because I, I've created some.
I've, I've done several too.
And I've done the felt in, and the detail they can do. They just do one dime from that, one dime, they do all kinds. And I've done the felt in and the detail they can do. They just do one dime from that, one dime, they do all kinds.
So I have a question, just not too complicated, cause I didn't figure it out. Yeah. Is anybody interested on the back, like, what if it said things about COVID, like founded in nineteen twelve, like information about our city versus these? I'm not saying I don't like. Do we have any interest in having the back be more about COVID, founded blah, 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 blah? Is there a list of that or are you, okay, I'm gonna either read one and just talk that out there. Was it a clover challenge coin?
Well, maybe you could say stuff on the banner.
I mean, just, do we want to get anything about COVID, history of COVID, founded in nineteen twelve, blah, blah, blah?
You know, that, that could be the next challenge coin that I put up. Actually, that established nineteen twelve might be on our flag.
Either way, I just was wondering if we wanted anything more about the history of our community, we want to hear the COVID challenge coin that would be about COVID. We know something about it. But I don't know what that is.
If you want to try to come up with something that you want, try to qualify. I don't think that this is, uh.
It's not on fire, you know, it's just.
Then I can think about it for a week if I can't think. We think, I think it's a really good idea.
Okay.
And I think the price is a thousand, I'm comfortable with.
I don't think you should be buying what we're gonna be giving away here when somebody comes up for a proclamation.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
I'm talking about, I go to, I go to Germany and I hand them out. Those, those should be on me. I agree.
We used to have things for people, but we don't, I think we haven't had any of those for a decade at least. I think it's a really nice idea. I'll try to think of something about COVID.
Yeah, we'll just wait till next week. We'll come up with something.
I like the tails and, and.
You like the U of it?
And I like that. And maybe the same color as tails on, on, on that stage right logo sort of. All, all the vendor last part is a, a black and white rendering of that, cause what will get colored will be upper white.
Do we have a city motto or anything like that? Like, in God we trust. Oh, no, that's taken. Do we have anything like that? That is? It is. That's what I hear. Gateway and Sierra.
Yes, you're right. Okay. Uh, any member of the public wish, address council, you'd like you had a spring underneath you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. Michael Cunningham of Clovis. Two things. Keep it simple. What was presented tonight is just perfect with me, one member of the public. Um, and, uh, better buy more than a thousand because, uh, me sitting here in these council meetings, there's an awful lot of people. If you start giving them out, you better give them out to everyone that presents themselves and does something good for the city. I think it's an excellent idea. But we don't, don't need it to beat it to death. It's, it's just a challenge coin and. It certainly is here. And, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to next week.
Uh, let's see, uh, do we have anybody online?
None.
Uh, have some, we got no comments from the public on this?
No.
Okay, we will, uh, we will discuss this next week if we have something else and if we don't, then we will move forward, I guess. Yep, we do. Okay, we'll come to, uh, workshop for the city, for the city council to conduct a workshop to discuss the impact on ongoing operations during the COVID nineteen state of emergency as declared by the federal government, state of California, county of Fresno and city of Clovis and to explore actions the city may take in response to the crisis. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. This is our regular update. Uh, this first slide is the number of positive cases reported to individuals with a Clovis address. Uh, and it is following generally the county trends, um, and statewide trends. Keeping in mind that the, uh, the reporting period shown in the last bar there isn't yet complete, so that number will change. And we expect it to be up closer to the fifty-one of the previous week. Uh, this, it shows the number of deaths reported to Clovis address residents, um, since, by, by week. Uh, it is also following county and state trends. It, uh, you know, peaked earlier in the summer. Um, it is now down, we had one this last week, so that's good news. This is the hospitalization. Um, again, if we think back to March, when this all started, we wanted to ensure that, uh, the whole idea of closing things down was to keep from overwhelming the medical system. Uh, the solid blue line is the confirmed number of Fresno County hospitalizations that are due to COVID. The dotted blue line is the confirmed plus suspected, uh, COVID cases that have been hospitalized in Fresno County. Uh, the solid red line is the confirmed ICU cases in Fresno County and the dotted red line is the confirmed plus suspected ICU cases. Uh, as you can see, we had a, last week when I showed you this slide, we were in the middle of, uh, this bump right here that was somewhat concerning, but it has started to come back down. Uh, so that, that is good news. So this is the, this is from the state's webpage. This is the number of cases in Fresno County. An interesting situation is this number right here is minus one fourteen. Um, so what, yes. Um, so, uh, a, a little bit of explanation as to why there's a minus number. It's a minus number is basically, oh, we found out there were some errors and we just make up for them all on this one day. So, uh, that number was minus one fourteen. Um, it was probably, if it had been keeping with the days before and after, it was probably really closer to about seventy to eighty. So that means we had, uh, they found about close to two hundred errors that they corrected on that day. The, the errors actually resulted, uh, if you remember, there's two tests to determine if you have COVID. There's a third one that, that tests for antibodies if you've ever had it, but the two to test if you have it. One is the PCR test, the polymerous chain reaction test. The second is the antigen test. Uh, the antigen test is typically faster, uh, reporting, but the PCR test is, uh, considered more reliable and it is the only one that the state counts. Um, apparently, and I'm not sure where the mix-up occurred, but some of the reports, and, and I don't know whether it was reports going into the county or from the county to the state, I don't know, I, I'm not sure where it happened, but reportedly there were several of the antigen tests that were reported as confirmed cases. Um, and those are not confirmed. It's only confirmed with the PCR. Uh, those, uh, those antigen tests accumulated or those misreported antigen tests accumulated over a, a few week period and then they were corrected on October sixth, which leads to that, uh, significant negative number and a, a, a kind of a skewed graph. Um, this is the Fresno, I'm gonna come back to that because when we get to the reopening status, that could play a factor. Uh, this is the day over day new deaths in Fresno County. Again, it is following similar to state trends. Uh, peaked late summer, started to drop. We had, everybody seemed to kinda have a spike there, um, but then it has since continued to decline. Uh, and you can see, this is from the state webpage and, uh, you can see the verbiage here where it talks about any instance of negative number of cases or deaths reflects a correction to previous reporting. So that's why there's that negative number in there. So, uh, for the tier assignment, which determines how many businesses are allowed to open, how, how much, um, uh, as of, those are reported on Tuesdays. So as of last Tuesday, Clo- uh, Fresno County had an adjusted daily new case rate of seven point two per hundred thousand population and a positive test rate of five point three percent. So the positive test rate stayed within the red tier, the substantial tier. Um, but as you can see, the, uh, daily new cases exceeded the threshold for the, uh, substantial, for the upper limit for the substantial tier. Um, putting, which would put Fresno County in the widespread category, which is back to purple, which is back to no indoor dining and such. Um, now, the way it works is when you're at a tier, if you have numbers that show you need to go up to the next tier and it's worst case, either one of those numbers would push you up. Um, uh, you're kind of on a watch list the first week that happens. The second week the numbers push you into the higher tier would be when you go into the higher tier. I'm not sure what those numbers are gonna show tomorrow when they're released. Um, and, uh, uh, we're all watching them. Um, the county health department is optimistic that we will remain in the red tier. Uh, that's the latest. Um, uh, and, and, and again, just conjecture on my part, keeping in mind that the way these cases, you, you know, it, there's about a ten day lag, so the numbers that come out tomorrow will be based on what the numbers were at the week ending, uh, October third. Um, now, since on October sixth, we had these two hundred cases wiped from the slate, I would hope that the state would take that into consideration and not bump us into a higher tier based on data that was corrected two days after the end of the reporting period. But again, it's, it's a complicated situation. Um, we'll find out tomorrow where we are and, uh, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we stay in the, the red category. Um, and, uh, that's it for my presentation. Um, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Luke? We, we had talked last week about, um, reaching out to the mayors of some of our smaller cities in county, in the county that were struggling with this and I did reach out the email to all of our smaller cities that have higher COVID rates. And I, I asked them what we could do to help them, uh, get through this situation. And I haven't heard anything back yet. Uh, I'll have a cog meeting here later next week and I'll probably have an opportunity to have some face-to-face contact. But, you know, i- if there are things staff-wise that we can do to, you know, help them get through this crisis, that, that would be something we can, we'd gladly do. Any other, any questions for staff?
I haven't seen any reporting on those health equity metrics, kind of carved out of any of this. So I, I don't know, I, you know, I don't, you know, you're penalized for them, but I, I'm not seeing them reported separately. I guess I haven't seen that even in my day job.
The county is, um, is, is, is looking at those. That is, that's even a newer issue. And I think everybody is trying to sort out where i- if you were, if you met the base criteria but were failing in that criteria, would that in fact bump you to the high, next higher level or does it just prevent you from going to the next lower level? Um, it's, it, it, it's a, a moving target.
It is indeed.
I will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address council on this item? Anyone in chambers? Seeing none? Do we have anybody online?
None.
Mr. Clark, do we get any correspondence?
No.
Okay, um, this is just a, uh, discussion item. Uh, I, I don't know, did anybody see, and I, I hope I'm reading this incorrectly, that the governor, the state department of health is putting out a, a, you are prohibited from having more than three households inside your home for holiday celebrations. I hope I read that incorrectly, but I'm, that's not shocked if that's the case. Um, did anybody else read that? Uh, did I read it incorrectly, Bob? Did you see it? More than three households cannot gather together. Right. The brother-in-law you didn't want anyway. Anyway, we'll come to, uh, council comments. Uh, Bob, do we have any pictures today?
Yes. John? So that is the, um, drive-through of the Dutch Brothers, which is being built at Fowler and Herndon. And I, um, this is an issue that did not, I don't recall coming to the Clovis city council because as, as far as I understand, that particular, um, particular piece of property, it had already been designated for some building to go up there. Uh, the only, um, body that had the opportunity to, to review this, other than our, our staff, um, was the planning commission because a conditional use permit was required at that location. So I just want us to be able to be aware of this because there is some concern among the tenants at that, um, shopping center. It's the Bonds Shopping Center corner, uh, that there's gonna be a lot of traffic there and that it's not going to flow well. When I looked at it, it seemed to me like, you know, I've been to some Dutch Brothers with my daughter before and I don't really see the great attraction, but, um, there have been some pretty long lines and we just forego it because it's like, I'm not, I'm not gonna wait that long. And, um, but I don't know what kind of a challenge this is gonna present for those who live or, or work at that particular complex. And subsequently, what kind of questions we're gonna get as council members, um, when people start to, should they start to see long lines there? And so if I could maybe get, um, some kind of a report from staff as to, um, what our expectations are there and then if things are not going well because it's a conditional use permit, I'm presuming we can always pull the permit a year later if we wanted to. Um, so I am, uh, I, I, I wanna be able to speak intelligently to it, would it, should it become an issue?
We, we, staff can get a report back. My understanding is that the queuing for this is designed to, uh, the queue is actually supposed to be on the south side behind the stores.
Correct.
On the south side and then they'll come out and then exit out. Um, so, uh, and that was intentional to keep the, the queue out from in front of the businesses and to keep it from snarling the customer traffic, um, but we'll have staff do a report on this.
Sure. Good. I appreciate that. Cause I think that, you know, you have an exit onto Fowler Avenue, which is south of there. And then you have a lot of traffic that just comes in, like on that main entry off of Fowler, which is going directly to the Bonds. And then they're gonna drive that way across the libs, donuts, and I think there's Educational Employees Credit Union there. And then I don't know how they meander back to get to the south part of that. Just seems, it seems complicated. I'm not saying it's impossible, but, um, and then is there a, do you know if there's a, uh, uh, I, I don't wanna call it a dining area, but a drinking area where people can sit down? Cause it seems like it's a rather large building compared to some of the other Dutch's that I've seen.
I'm not sure all that though.
Mike is shaking his head, no. You remember this, coming in front of the planning commission? They, and I thought that there, I thought I noticed as well some parking spaces there to the west of the building. So those are some, some of the questions that I have, um, because I could, I don't know if they have a walk-up window or not, um, in addition to the drive-through, so. Thank you.
Lynn? Jose? I have a couple, couple items to report out. Uh, League of Cities, I, uh, sat through about two and a half days of, of things. And some, some of the classes were actually pretty good. There was a item that came before the, uh, voting membership uh, on a resolution, uh. There was a item that came before the, uh, voting membership, uh, on a resolution, uh, to, Bob, I, I'm having a senior moment, what exactly?
It had to do with, uh, it was a federal law, um, and it has to do with pushing our congressional representatives to, uh, step up and modify the law that would regulate, require the internet service providers to regulate the type of speech which is taking place on the internet, and take down what they consider to be criminal, um, related. And I was, I was thinking that that meeting was gonna last you like two and a half days, but I'm hoping it didn't last you too long.
It, 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 not only did it not last that long, we didn't have a quorum, so...
Oh, okay.
It, the point was moot. The, um, but I was prepared, based on the conversation I had with Bob and what I read, it was, it was a, it was a big wish, a big wish burger that you were saying, you know, they needed to tie it down and actually make a, a real recommendation.
Right, the language was very ambiguous as to what would be considered, you know, criminal, who's going to make that determination, and, uh, how you take it down and who takes it down, so.
Yeah.
All right.
So anyway, that was, uh, that's all I had to report out, and I have nothing, uh, so we will be in adjournment. Thank you.